Hi, my name is Kurt Hagis. It's six o'clock. We'd like to get started. If there's no one else out in the hallway. We have a quorum. I'd like to call the meeting to order and have everyone around the table introduce themselves to the public, please. Oh, and before you do that, there is a microphone here we can use with a loudspeaker if anyone has trouble hearing us. We only have one, so we can pass it around if it's necessary. Would you like us -- would anyone in the audience like us to do that at this time? Okay? If you'd like us to do it later, that's fine. Joanne?
My name is Joanne Canning. I'm the superintendent of schools here in the Addison Northwest Supervisory Union. Excuse me.
I'm Stephanie Taylor. I'm the principal at Virgin's Union High School.
I'm Tanya Mears. I'm the business manager for Addison Northwest.
I'm Lori Childers. I'm the Addison rep for Virgin Union High School.
I'm George Gardner. I'm one of the Ferrisburg reps for the high school.
I'm Kurt Hagis, and I'm the other Ferrisburg trustee.
Neil Cameron, Virgin's.
Jeffrey Glassberg, Walden.
Josh Sickles, student rep to the board.
Emily Martin, student rep.
Glory Martin, administrative assistant to the superintendent. No relation.
Okay, so if there's no other call to order items, I'd like to open it up for public communication. Is there any tonight? Okay. There not being any, let's go to fiscal year 16 budget presentation.
Thank you, Kurt.
Before we jump in and take a look at the actual budget that's been presented to the board, I'd like to review the highlight sheet that I sent out to the board prior. I did have a chance to update that highlight sheet. Glory, do you want to make sure that the audience receives a copy? I'm not sure we have a copy for everyone. If you do not get a copy, please make sure we can get your name and contact information. I'd be happy to send it out. I first want to say that this was not an easy task, putting together this budget. I know this board recognizes that we needed to think about making corrections in some past budgeting practices. As you know, we have, in the current year, several obligations through contracts and through master agreement arrangements that were not budgeted for in the FY14 budget. This budget also includes a correction for past deficits, and we have received preliminary information from the auditors. They're almost fully completed with the FY14 audit, and the amount turned out to be more than the $540,000 that is included in the current FY15 budget. So for discussion purposes tonight, and let me first say that I understand the board gave us direction to keep the proposal to the current year's spending, which is in the amount of $9,417,197. And this current proposal is not within those parameters, but we're seeing this as a discussion. This is a first step. We have another budget meeting planned, and should we need a third one, we would have that before the end of January. I would like to say, however, the good news is that the budget that we presented to you tonight is below the threshold limit, and it's not close to the threshold limit. It is below the threshold limit, and we feel very comfortable with that. So for tonight's purposes and for discussion purposes, the FY16 budget the administration is presenting is in the amount of $10,472,750. This is an 11 percent increase over the current year budget. This represents a tax rate increase of six cents, which is -- and out of that six cents, please remember that the tax commissioner set two cents as that rate, and so the school portion is really a four cent increase. What that translates to is that the tax impact is $60 on a $100,000 assessed value of a home. So just putting that a little bit more in context. Some of the significant factors that included the current budget are as follows. I know that you've noticed there are some line items that are zero, some looks like they've changed significantly, and we really needed to make some corrections in where some of our budget items were placed. And so if you have questions because you're seeing some discrepancies in the amount from one year to the next, we can go through that after this presentation. The administrative model of principal and interim principal model will remain the same. We are not suggesting that because it's a cost savings. We're suggesting that because we have not had a chance to fully evaluate the efficacy of that model, and so we're recommending that it remains in the following school year. Another exercise that we went through is that we did adhere to the class size policy, and I'm hoping that you've had a chance to review that policy. On an annual basis, the superintendent is to report to you where we are at with our class size, and we see the budget presentation as that requirement. At this time, we do not see ourselves as eliminating courses. Rather, we will offer some courses every other year, and we will institute a long-range planning process with our students so that we can ensure that they have access to the full range of courses over the course of their four years. Currently, the model is that they meet with their guidance counselors. They do do some long-range planning, but they're not really committed to any one or two, three, four courses until the beginning of a semester, and they can certainly make some changes. Our current proposals do reflect staff reductions. A summary of the department average size is included in the report, as you can see. Given the requirements of your class size policy, we are anticipating a 4.0 reduction of staff. That is not for people, that is pieces and parts of some positions. And we're not prepared to lay out what that looks like to you tonight because we want to give administration an opportunity to fully process with the staff that might be affected. So while we're recommending staff reductions, we also need to be true to our school action plans. If we're going to try and make impact on the unmet needs of our school and align our resources to what we say is important in our school action plan, we have the need for a .8 literacy teacher. Currently, .2 of that is in our consolidated federal grant, and it's budgeted for at the central office level, but we anticipate adding an additional .8. We also need to increase PE by .33 because of the requirements in the education quality standards. We are currently not providing our middle school students with two times a week of physical education, and we want to be -- we want to meet those standards. We feel those are minimum expectations, so we anticipate a slight increase there. I'd also like to note that there were several unbudgeted item functions in the current FY15 budget. They include areas of personnel, transportation, building operations, fuel cost, and staff tuition, as well as a student tuition. Most of these areas are obligated expenses for running the building, for following the master agreement, or other contract obligations. And from what we can determine currently, there's about $250,000 that has not been budgeted in FY15 of those expenses. You'll have a much better idea of where we are with budget planning as we head into the second part of the school year. In March, we will be able to tell you where we're at and whether we anticipate an additional deficit as we end the school year. We are planning for a 4.5 percent increase in insurance, no increase in dental insurance. There are increases in special education, as you heard last month during the presentation from special ed, triple E, and the central office, needed to make legal obligations and to improve the challenges that we've had in our business functions. Also included in your budget is a three-year plan to address the cumulative food service deficit, which is currently totaling $51,000 -- $151,000. In a recent draft report from the auditors, it is anticipated that the FY14 deficit totals, after adjusting for what was included in your current year budget, is slightly more -- well, it is actually 768,749. Administration is recommending a five-year plan to address this deficit, and that is included in your budget under debt service. I'm not going to go through the class size, but we took what we anticipate in terms of student enrollment in each of the content areas, as you can see, and we interpret your policy to indicate that we were looking at averages in those classes. So an average in all English classes based on the sections. And you can see down that list how we've done. So in terms of the next steps, should the school board require the administration to make further reductions to meet budget guidance provided during your November meeting, we would further need to reduce the budget by over $1 million. Meeting this directive would reduce the tax rate by 13 cents, and for every penny on the tax rate, it would require a $225,000 reduction. So we just wanted to give you a little bit more information about that. Because the board has had to do reductions with core classes over the past two years, or if you accept this current proposal, we would not be recommending any additional core classroom reductions if we needed to make additional cuts. We would have to consider extracurricular activities in middle school and high school. We would likely reduce the school-based administration to a one-principal model, reductions in office support staff. We'd have to go to technology and the support that we provide, the technology to keep that up and running. We would likely have to eliminate a world language. We would have to eliminate programs that allow for individualization and personalized learning, and we would eliminate the instructional and department leadership model. We do have a priority list for you that we could discuss around buildings, if the board was interested in a separate article like you were last year. But I don't think that's really where we want to begin this discussion. We want to begin with any questions that you have about the budget proposal, and then if we have time, we can move into that part.
Thank you, Joanne.
Yep.
Everyone on the board received this information prior to the meeting, so I'm anticipating that there will be some questions. So would you like to start at one end, or start -- whoever wants to start, welcome to. So let's start at this end.
Okay. Diversified occupation expenses.
Mm-hmm.
I know a couple of months ago, we cut a check for that and then realized that it wasn't budgeted for last year. Is it in this one, and where?
It is, Lori. The diversified occupation program, the lion's share of the tuition cost is in the special ed budget, so you're not going to see it here. You'll see it in your assessment. But there is a student who attends that program that is not in special education. And, Tanya, where is that listed?
Second page, six rows left.
Thank you.
Tuition D O.
Ah, good. Thank you. The workers' comp.
Excuse me, I did want to -- I'm sorry, Lori. I did want to mention if anyone in the community wants a copy of the budget, we do have some copies here. If you would hand that out, please, Glory, or anyone on the board. Sorry, Lori.
That's okay. 52,500, first page, almost down to the bottom, instruction workers' comp. That looks like one of those that we budgeted $363 last year, and actually, the actual cost is going to be closer to 33.
Can I -- I'll see if I can do that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. So Lori, that is an expense for all the employees. Instead of -- what we'd like to move to, actually, is when we're talking about staff and some of the common areas like insurance and workman's comp, that would all be listed under 1100 instead of the content area of world language and English, and so on. And so what we've done in a couple of these areas, like workman's comp, we've taken all the employees' cost of that and put it in one line.
Okay. So if we went down through --
Then there is no -- I see. Okay.
All right. And so that -- go ahead. There's also an increase in the workers' comp because when we just did the workers' comp audit for this year, we were still underestimating the salaries, so you'll be getting an increase. So I added that in to the 16 budget.
Okay. And just following on that, it looks like we got $37,000, almost $38,000 actual, so 33 is still going to be okay? Yes, because we're reducing salaries.
Reducing staff.
Reducing. Do you want me to keep going, or does somebody else want to step in? I've got others.
No, I'd like to, you know.
Keep going. So it looks like we're proposing a cut in music department, 51,100.
Lori, we -- I know it's going to be a little difficult not to point to individual areas, but we're really trying to stay away from discussion about staff because of the notification piece.
I don't know how we're going to discuss the budget if we don't discuss that.
Can I?
Yeah, please.
I mean, you have a list of areas of class size, and that reflects reductions in various departments to align the sections of classes we offer to move the class sizes to the policy guidelines. We did the same thing in music. It's just not reflected on that list exactly, but it shows us a reduction in the number of sections we offer in music to meet the actual enrollment needs of students.
So would it be safe to say that if I went down -- I mean, there's several in here that we've had a reduction in salary from 2015 budget to 2016 budget? So is every one of those reductions this class size adjustment that you're talking about?
Yes.
And social studies increased significantly.
The social studies salaries, first and foremost, did not reflect -- was not accurate in the current year, and we also had a hard time trying to figure out where in the budget there was the salary adjustment line for the contract master agreement negotiations. So it does look larger. We did not increase in social studies.
There's three full-time staff in the high school social studies department, and that salary figure is accurate. What you saw last year was not accurate.
Correct.
Is the microphone, please?
Sure. What would you like me to repeat?
I think I got it, for our social studies, but it's pretty low.
Okay. I'll just point that way when I talk.
So if I look at FY14, which is actual, 270, and this is still on social studies, we got an actual of 278, and 216 is going to be 217.
Oh, totals.
Yeah, totals. And that 217 is going to make it? That's a big difference between, obviously, actuals, 2014 actuals and --
It reflects the exact number of staff that we have, and as I said before, in the current year, we could not find where there was money for the salary adjustment that happened because of negotiations.
Right, except that's -- it's going opposite. Right? The FY -- the actual for 14 is almost 280,000, and --
Oh, I see. You're going --
Budget, right.
You're going back. Yeah.
Right. And I, you know, did you reduce?
There was a reduction.
We had a one FTE reduction in social studies last year. We can't be certain whether that $221,000 figure under salaries for 14 reflects before we made that adjustment. Remember, we reduced staff that ended up being a middle school reduction, and a high school teacher moved down into middle school, resulting in a one FTE reduction in the high school social studies department and in social studies in general.
Okay. And I assume, oh, the technology increase. Want to speak to that?
The technology increase is based on the -- we anticipate having a three-year lease with additional technology that we plan to institute in terms of our middle school model. We are increasing the access to a one-to-one initiative at the -- in grade seven and eight.
There was also an increase -- a person that was not budgeted for that had been issued a contract.
I see that on a second.
Which means all of her expenses weren't budgeted.
The career development? It's a pretty significant increase.
The career development, like in many of the areas, had no transportation budgeted for, and we had to include it because it's a large part of what we do with our students. We place them out into the community, and that reflects what we anticipated.
Thirty-two thousand dollars worth of transportation that wasn't budgeted for.
That's right.
You'll see transportation listed in many of the department areas and budget areas, and that's because it was never included where it was actually being spent in the past, and I wanted to align it with those areas.
Okay. And then we have a pretty significant increase in extracurricular?
$58,000 in transportation.
Jesus Christ. Okay. That's it, Kurt. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. On the first page, four lines up, tuition reimbursement?
Yes.
Went up by 70 percent.
George, that's a contractual obligation. Our teachers, in their master agreement, are able to access up to six credits based on the UVM rate, and we've noticed that the prior spending has not been $50,000. We feel that that was an unbudgeted item and left us with a situation where we may have to go over budget again. So we looked at history, and we budgeted actuals.
You did say you were increasing FED. On the FED salaries, there's a $30,000 increase.
Correct.
That's an additional instructor or part of one.
It's a .33.
The Walden budget went up by $37,000?
Again, you'll notice that transportation is a large part of that, and the other would be the salary and insurance adjustments.
But the transportation was someplace else. There is -- there is on the -- next to the last page, in the lower section of the page, under transportation, there's transportation Walden that increases by 15,749. Now, that isn't part of this total up here.
A decrease, actually. Yeah, it's a decrease.
A decrease.
Right here on this one, honey. This is the 15, and this is the 16.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. And the network support specialist, we didn't have one this year, but we're going to again.
No, you have one, but you didn't budget for it.
We didn't budget. But he was budgeted in the previous year, so.
That's correct. It was not -- I mentioned in the very beginning that we have about $250,000 worth of contract or other obligated expenses that we could not find in the FY15 budget, but that we were obligated to provide. Fuel is another one. When you look at under building and maintenance, past practice tells us that we spend about $168,000 on fuel, and it was budgeted in the current year at 130.
Okay.
We just went back and had to make that adjustment because we felt that it was underbudgeted.
That extracurricular transportation you said was another of those unbudgeted items.
Correct.
And we're increasing the -- well, maybe we are, maybe we aren't. We're showing a $13,000 increase over the current budget for a librarian, but that this year that we're in right now is only half of what was previously allocated there.
We reduced the library staff, or library FTE last year to .5. We had a very senior member of the faculty who retired.
Right.
And I hired someone who's brand new and is much lower on the salary scale. We also had a library aide who was part-time last year, who we started this year with the part-time library aide, and then she resigned. So I had -- I decided to increase the library position to full-time using that salary that we had budgeted in that amount. We can still maintain her full-time at less than what we were paying the library, media specialist, and the aide last year.
Okay. Thank you. And the supervisory union assessment, we didn't -- I don't think we understood when we were having that meeting last month that that amount was increasing by 231 or $2,000.
And that was the email that I --
Yes. It was mentioned at the meeting that the assessment would look a little skewed to you between 15 and 16, because in FY15, the current year you're in right now, they used a $400,000 surplus from FY13 to cover the assessment pieces, some assessment pieces. So everybody got a lower assessment piece. This year, you don't have that buffer to land on that $400,000, so everybody increased by that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All set? Yeah?
Okay. I'm going to go a little bit higher elevation.
Okay.
And I appreciate the detailed look-sees. Thank you. I didn't have a chance to examine it like you did, but let's start with transportation. Can you differentiate for me the transportation line that's in the district assessment versus the transportation that's parsed amongst the categories?
I can. When we presented the supervisory union budget last month, we mentioned that the to and from would be in the assessment, but the individual program needs would need to be budgeted at the building level.
All right. Thank you for that. So sticking with transportation and going under the hood for a second, Walden has a $25,000 travel line now, and that's the transportation to and from.
No.
That's their field trip transportation.
Yes.
Okay. I am aware they've been very successful at fundraising this year.
We are aware that they have been doing some fundraising.
Right.
And we have received some funds.
Okay. So you speak of a five-year plan for deficit reduction? I remember a long and protracted conversation with our voters about that last year, so can you tell me what the plan is and what your thinking is?
Tanya, could you illuminate a little bit more on that?
Sure. The total deficit was the $768,000 that accumulated that hasn't been taken care of through FY14. I spoke to Peoples, and they gave me a rough estimate of what a principal payment and interest would be for five years to cover that, and I built that into your debt service line. It's roughly $154,000 in principal payment, and I think it was like $25,000 in interest or something.
That's what's contained in the bond principal line.
Yes, including your bond payment that you are subject to pay every year, too.
So what would the mechanics be of doing that? You're talking about borrowing money for five years.
So what happens when you do this to cover a deficit like that? You go to the bank and you say, you know, you need to cover the bond, you need to cover your deficit. What you do is they actually give you the cash, you put it into your bank, and then you just make a one-year payment for the next five years, and that covers that deficit as long as you don't continue running deficits for the next five years.
So which gets to the beginning of the conversation on this bit. So last year, this is exactly the plan that the board proposed to do, a three-year deficit reduction for last year's. And, you know, we proposed that notwithstanding the fact that we were looking in our crystal ball and seeing another deficit for this year, which we now know is $768,000, considerably more than the prior superintendent had suggested it might be based on their forecast. superintendent had suggested it might be based on their forecasting. So, we were not able to sell that to the voters. They were very concerned about the idea of borrowing on a five-year or a three-year note to cover a deficit. They were willing to cover the cost of that in one year, but they were very concerned about taking out a five-year or a three-year note to do that. So, that's a little bit of history. I think there was some procedural aspects to that. I think if the board wants to agree to go there, I think we may need to ask the voters if they approve of that, as opposed to just doing it by fiat.
Neil, you know, as you can imagine, because, I mean, really, that deficit was one-point-three million dollars. It wasn't five, and it's not really seven. On top of that, you have a hundred-and-fifty-something-thousand-dollar deficit in food service. That would decimate the program. We didn't think that you could handle, we could handle that in one year, nor do I now. And so, I really believe this is fiscally responsible, because you're able to maintain, and I understand maybe minimally from some people's perspective, a quality program, but if we tried to do this in one or two years, it just won't happen without making significant impacts.
I get that. I just wanted to make sure that that little bit of history, which is still very fresh in my mind.
Sure.
Is well-known to everybody at the table, because it was a big...
Big deal.
It was a big deal, and it was well-reported by the folks from Addison Independent. I'm sure this piece of the conversation will be as well. So, you know, I think we need to look carefully about how we message it, about how we explain it, about what our cost-containment approaches are for coming years.
Yeah.
Because I agree. I mean, you know, adding another seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand plus one-fifty-eight would be very difficult. Anybody want to add anything to that, because I think that's a very important...
I'd like to just continue with the questioning and then come back, and we can...
Good.
I just have one more comment about that.
Mm-hmm.
Being a five-year note, you would have to present it to the board in a special, I mean, into the taxpayers in a special article, anyway.
Okay. So, that was sort of the mechanical or logistical part of it, right?
Yes.
So, it would be presented...
Being a five-year note, then, they have to approve of it, yes.
The voters have to.
The voters.
So, it would be a bond vote?
It's not technically a bond vote. It's still, it's borrowing to recover a deficit, and you can't get a bond for recovering it.
And so, that would be a separate line item?
But it would be a separate article in your, on your vote.
Yes.
Have you had experience with this in other districts where you've...
Yes, many times.
I'm not trying to be cute.
Not quite this, not quite this, not quite this large, but it was five-hundred-and-fifty million and, I mean, five-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Please.
And it went down three times until we finally got it to go, so I do have experience with it.
Okay. I'll save my most global question for later, so thanks.
Jeff?
Thank you for your work on this. I want to spend a little bit more time on this deficit issue to understand it. We included in the current year's budget, which is FY fifteen, five-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars to liquidate what we understood to be FY thirteen's deficit in full. Does that track to what our FY thirteen audit showed as the deficit?
I could only find five-hundred-and-forty thousand even as the deficit amount that was covered.
In your budget.
In the budget.
In the budget.
And the deficit for thirteen was five-hundred-and-forty-two thousand eight-hundred-and-ninety dollars. So, there was only two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety dollars that needed to be recovered from the thirteen, but then there's seven-hundred-and-sixty-five eight fifty-nine just in fourteen. So, I added them together to get the five sixty-eight, and then you would be zero.
And will we have detail on what the drivers were for the FY fourteen deficit? What makes up seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars of unbudgeted costs?
That will take me some research to do, but yes, if that's what you're asking me to do, I can get that for you.
It's a big number, so we need to understand what caused that. Class size. I did look at the policy. I just want to make sure I understand where various departments fall relative to the policy, and then there are a couple of programs that aren't listed, and I'd like to understand what those class sizes are. So, we talk about terminal courses. Minimum average course content area twelve, ideal twelve to eighteen. What would be an example of a terminal course?
The final course in a sequence?
French four?
Perhaps. French four, right. You might say, and many of our advanced classes are the final course in a department, sort of a school sequence, so although I think the policy designates the difference between advanced courses and terminal courses, we treat them, you know, in AP Bio or something, as usually the last science course that a student would take here, so.
So, in the case of art at thirteen point seven-five and agriculture at twelve, how do those relate to our policy?
Some of our classes have, are limited class enrollment sizes for class based on the equipment that they need. Digital photography is one of them. I think the limit is ten. Music piano is one of those. We only have eight keyboards. So, it lowers the average that, you know, we took all the students enrolled in the classes and the number of sections, we thought were a reasonable amount of sections to offer in those areas, and looked at staffing reductions that way. But in some cases, we can't reduce it any further because I only have ten digital cameras. So, if we have twenty-seven kids enrolled in that class, I might offer two sections and tell seven kids that they can't take it this year, or we might offer three sections and have three extra seats in one section.
Okay. It might be worth looking at what those equipment needs would be?
Mm-hmm.
Digital cameras are not very expensive. Just, I'm not...
It's the computers that go along with the digital cameras, too, so...
But I think the concept is the same, Jeff, and as we're doing this analysis now, while we're also trying to figure out program, I think those pieces are fixable to increase those numbers.
Walden, class size?
There's seventeen students this year.
How many instructors?
There are two instructors.
How does that relate to our policy?
We interpreted, I'll say we interpreted this as a flexible pathway to learning, and we recognize that in alternative settings, you don't, it doesn't meet the conventional core classes. And so, in our minds, for the purposes of interpreting this policy, we were seeing a minimum of fifteen for a program like that. Same with the duo program. Similar to that, we would see the agricultural program. And so, we recognize that the policy is a place to start, but as we're really making a deeper analysis, we really have to have some more discussion about whether this suits our needs. And I'm not saying suits our needs so we can lower the class number and accommodate everyone, but we have some, we are moving in a direction of individualization. And so, we want to make sure that we are keeping true to that, but not diluting and having such low ratios that it doesn't make sense. So, we do have some outlier individualized programs that we want to support because we believe in multiple flexible pathways to graduation, and I think that in that, in the case of Walden, it's one of the programs that has allowed students that different way. But we are looking at class size there, and we will continually do so. One of the changes that we're going to make is that the program doesn't make decisions about total enrollment till later in the year, like April. And Stephanie and I were talking about enrolling students, just like any student who needs to enroll in coursework now, so that we can make decisions early in relation to budget-building process and not waiting because we don't, we won't know.
I'm looking at your memo with summary, and under the next steps, I want to try to understand this math a little bit better.
Yep.
So, we indicate in order to meet the guidance provided by the board in November, we'd need to further reduce the budget by a million fifty-five thousand. It would reduce the tax rate by thirteen cents. For every penny on the tax rate would require two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars of reductions. I'm not following that math, because thirteen times two-twenty-five is almost three million dollars.
Yeah, it's, go ahead, Tanya. You need help on that one?
It's two different scenarios here. So, right now, your increase on your budget is right around eight-hundred thousand dollars, which is a six-cent increase, which is about two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. So, to get it back down, you want to, you know, back down to the tax rate you're at currently, then you'd have to cut two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars for every cent to get back down. You can't get rid of the two cents that you've already got from the state. And Joanne and I did just a scenario of...
We modeled what it would look like.
If we use the exact same budget that we have, the dollar amount that we have right now for FY fifteen, and you use that, and I ran the tax sheet, it's thirteen cents cheaper. It's a tax rate of a dollar forty-seven. It's just, it's just the way the tax sheet calculates, and the revenues that you can calculate, the local revenues, and when you go down to the budget of nine-point-four that you have this year, you have to decrease your local revenues, too, so. That one line is really talking about two different things, two different ways of achieving the tax cut.
Mr. Chair, am I time-limited, or can I keep going? Do we have some background information that allows us to understand what the level of participation is in extracurricular activities in the middle and high school? So, as we talk about next steps, what areas of consideration would be?
Yes.
What does that mean?
We do, Jeff, and I guess what I was hoping is that the board would give us further financial guidance and give us, and I don't know what that means, anywhere from the original guidance to, we want you to shave this down three more cents on the tax rate and allow the administration to come back to you with a proposal, rather than the board making a decision about what you think.
Specifics.
Right. Specifics.
Fair enough. Can you describe what the instructional and department leadership model is?
Yeah, I'm gonna let Stephanie describe that.
Say the question again.
The instructional and department leadership model is?
Yeah, we have, we pay stipends to our department heads. They do various tasks, devising a department budget, doing ordering, directing curriculum. They hold meetings. So, we have department area leaders. We also have other teacher leaders that are stipended for various tasks that they do, whether some are assessments, some are leading other groups, some are grade-level teams. We have, our EST model is run through our morning meeting and grade-level team, and the title of the person called Keeper of the Books has additional responsibilities in the legal requirements for paperwork around 504 plans and EST plans, and they do that, so they're stipended. So, you see that in the general education budget near the top. Last year, we had thirty-six thousand budgeted, and it's been reduced to twenty-three-six, roughly, and that's, that would all go away.
And then just a few particular line item questions. Lori covered a number of things that were highlighted, but I did want to ask. I brought this up last year. I'm looking in eleven hundred, the teen parenting education program for thirty thousand dollars.
We are part of a collaborative, Jeff, in Addison County to when our, if we have students who are pregnant and cannot be educated in school, and so, the collaborative provides that service and also counseling and support to teens in the county. And that's the expense that's been given to us annually that we pay in.
And so, are we contractually obligated to this?
We are, are we contract, I have not signed a contract. I have not seen a contract. This is a reoccurring expense, and I'm, as being part of the collaborative, you agree to participate, no matter whether you have one student or whether you have ten students. I have not seen any agreement, any memorandum of understanding, but it is, unless you can provide additional information, it's a collaborative that we just continually sign on to, and we get the service.
So, I'm questioning that as we think about next steps. Leave that to you. It looks like a large dollar amount for potentially small...
We actually, we actually have two students accessing those services this year.
Bear with me a moment.
Can you just, do you mind? A little clarification as far as the, you said that if they're pregnant, they can't come to school? No, no, no. They can come to school. There's a, every region has a program like this because of the stigma that's attached to young girls who have decided to have a child, and it's, it has been thought that they're better served in an environment where they can get education about planning for their future, as well as education to finish their high school diploma. And so, this education goes on at the parent-child center? Correct. Do they, sorry, one more thing. Do they, those two students, do they also get services here at this high school? They fully over there?
Yeah. Oh, thank you.
So, just the guidance, essentially, and they don't get transportation or anything like that? Well, maybe.
No, the students now are not getting transportation.
Are you finished, Jeff?
I just have a couple of other line items. Thank you.
I just wanted to go back.
Fourteen hundred under extracurricular. Coaches and advisors is up twenty percent. Is that just inadequately budgeted? I see the prior years were much higher, so I assume that's the explanation.
Sixty-two to six seventy-four.
And the prior years were in the nineties, so...
Right.
I assume that's...
I think last year showed a decrease as a result of the budget discussions. I mean, I have his spreadsheet here. I could go through it, but I don't exactly, I wouldn't be able to look at it and give you that answer right away, what the exact increase is. You asked for participation. Like, four-hundred-and-seventy-one students participated in athletics, or are participating in athletics, and we have four-hundred-and-fourteen students participating in the part of extracurriculars that is not specifically athletics, but it's music, the musical, student council, math team, National Honor Society, and some of those members.
I think that's it. My other general question, when I now look at all of these individual transportation line items, it's a very big number. Do we have any options to look at how to do that less expensively?
A new contract. Negotiating a new contract and actually looking at, we have been thinking about providing transportation with a van. I certainly... I, I certainly would not want us to be in the business of taking on a bus fleet again. I'm not in the business of managing that, and, and I think that would be very difficult. But there are things that we can do here at the high school by purchasing a van so that we can handle the, the, the community-based learning program, we can use it for some of the smaller sports teams. And we have been researching that, and we believe it's something that we can probably purchase in preparation for next year.
Has there ever been any discussion with Addison County Transit Resources about accessing their programs?
Not that I'm aware of, Jeff, I obviously haven't been here long enough, but have not.
I, given the numbers we're looking at, I'd encourage trying to find out whether there's any possibility for collaboration, their staff, they have the equipment, they do dial-a-ride services throughout the county. Thank you.
Yep.
Richard?
All I have, one question I have is, one is, what is total population for the student population in the school?
The high school?
Middle school, high school? Once you're talking about the extracurricular activity, you have four or something involved in it, so I'd assume that's the middle school and high school that you're talking about.
It is, but it's also multiple sports.
I understand.
Yeah, so, we're about, about five-twenty or so, we'll be, at the high school next year, we'll be about three-twenty, but we have various programs that pull students out, that could be as many as sixty-five to seventy next year. So, the high school population will dip below three-hundred easily.
That's fine, that's a question, that's a statement I didn't, I, I've never known, so I just wanted to ask that. Second is, this transportation thing for Walden and for other things, mainly Walden, whenever, this transportation, as, as it was clarified, isn't to and from the place, it's for field trips and stuff, why wasn't that ever budgeted in any other budget?
Richard, before you came in, we outlined for the board that as we got into the school year, we realized that there were some obligated expenses, such as transportation and even personnel, that were not included in FY fifteen.
Forgive my ignorance, like I said, I'm, I'm new in this whole world of finance and stuff, but it just, like I said, it's not only in, I'm looking at it, and I, I mean, the, the travel column, if you will, lack of a better word for, for what I can think of at the moment. We have paperwork, we have FY thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, and I'm just using that as an example, but I've seen it in other, other breakups, that this travel fund was, it's been zero all, all those years. And all of a sudden, this year, I mean, I, I understand there's expense, but I have to, I mean, I have to, one for myself, I'm trying to figure out, wrap myself around it, but then I'm gonna have to, the voters and the patent understand why all of a sudden, you know, the, just that one aspect, we're, we're, we're increasing that, that, that subcategory, Walden, by that large amount, when there was nothing, there's no paper trail showing it that was ever done before in the last three years.
There is actually a, if you look in the bottom of your, one of the last pages of your budget, there's a section called transportation, and there is, at least last year, there is a line item for Walden, not for the prior years, but I can tell you, as far as I know, that this program relies heavily on transporting students to a variety of community-based settings.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I didn't understand, I didn't know that, but I'm, I'm coming to learn that, I'm just, like I said, you know, I'm very simple to myself, and like I said, I see, I see past three years previously with nothing, and all of a sudden, we're, we've got a twenty, twenty-five thousand dollar item. Now, looking back, as you pointed out, that I, now I have something to point to, which is good for me, to feel better, that works, but it's still an increase of over ten grand.
It is, and I, I believe that is, that happened because it was not budgeted at the level that it was provided, which goes back to one of the reasons why we've been in a deficit, because we've been overspending our budget.
Welcome to America, okay, that's all I have, thank you.
So, I'd like to go back to anyone who has any questions that came up while others were asking questions.
Oh, yeah, so, on the first page, instruction P-I-L-O insurance, what is that?
Payment in lieu of other insurance.
Okay.
Our staff is able to take a cash, cash in lieu of getting supported through the, the district's insurance policy, it's part of the master agreement.
Is that actively marketed?
By whom?
By us. It would seem to be a tremendous cost savings.
I'm, I'm, I'm not aware of any marketing that goes on.
I don't believe it's marketed, no, but if anybody reads their master agreement, it does state right in there that-
And I believe going forward, Jeff, that given the, the new insurance policies, I, I don't believe that, that we're gonna be able to do that, I think that that's gonna go away, we're either gonna offer insurance or not, I think, I think there's, there is going to be a problem with that.
And, you know, to answer your question, I guess, it's, it's usually discussed in a contract negotiation. It's not always used, it's not often used, there are some circumstances where maybe an administrator and a teacher are in the same, you know, contract, or in the same supervisory union, but it's, it's nowhere near addressed like it is in industry. In industry, it's, you know, it's, it's not available, as a matter of fact, oftentimes, you pay more to not have your, or to have your spouse, or, you know,
Correct.
on your family on the insurance plan, so. You know, whatever changes come forward, we can't change that until the next contract cycle, so.
Do we have anybody using it?
That's why we're budgeting for this.
And that's the thirteen-seven-twenty-two, based that on that.
Right.
It's a surprise to me.
Really?
That, yes, that you would be paying people for them not to take health insurance.
Well, I mean-
It's a rare organization that offers a better plan.
You're right.
Yeah.
So, under extracurricular, we're paying health insurance under extracurricular, but we don't have any salaries, or maybe extracurricular coaches and advisors are salary positions? I, I don't know, anyway, I don't know why, who we're paying health insurance for?
Student activities director? The-
We have an athletic director.
Athletic director.
Right, so his salary is in here?
Student activities director.
Oh, where am I? Fifty-six, okay.
Third line.
Okay, and that's his health, okay, thank you. Extracurricular officials, we had actual expense of nineteen, but we're budgeting twenty-seven.
Those are to pay for the officials?
Yes, I know, but we, we had actuals of, in fourteen of nineteen.
The, the costs have gone up, plus the mileage rate has gone up too.
Cost because somebody's demanding more?
VPA is the one that sets the rates.
Who's that, I'm sorry?
The Vermont Principals Association, the ones, they run the athletics.
And they, eight thousand dollars?
If you have more games, you have to have, you know, they're, they're proposing most games having three officials, when they used to only have two. Especially varsity level.
And we have to adhere to that.
We have to adhere to that, and the, the personal, you know, the, the, the person who's supposed to be on site in case of a concussion is another one of those unfunded mandates.
The athletic trainers.
So, we've got, we have to follow what the regulations are.
Okay, and supplies, down a little further, we had fourteen, actual is twelve, and we're budgeting eighteen.
The athletic director is the one that put a detailed budget together.
That's this.
So, I'm-
I'm gonna use Jeff's language, we really ought to look at that as we're going forward, that's a, this is a really big increase, and we have technology requirements, equipment that could use that money. I am absolutely in favor of extracurricular activities. But we have, we've got programs we've gotta save. Can you tell, give me an idea of why we pay fees or dues for extracurricular activities?
We pay admissions fees to most events, cross-country running.
Oh, they, really, they charge fees for that?
Oh, yeah, wrestling fees, in, in almost every sport we do, we also pay fees to maintain membership in, like the VPA and the other athletic organizations, those are annual fees.
Speech pathology, next page, speech pathology goes in the supervisory union now, but we have a twelve-thousand-dollar line item.
You have to cover a speech pathologist for regular ed kids, and I believe there's getting-
Speech pathology fees covers for, offered for students that are, do not fall under a special ed designation.
And so, that would depend on need, this is an, as needed, because I see in thirteen, actual, we spent fifty-nine thousand, and in fourteen, we'd spent a hundred-and-fifty dollars. So, we're expecting that need.
We have that need now.
We do.
Yeah.
Operations propane gas, actual for fourteen is fourteen, and we're budgeting twenty-five, are we expecting a really big increase in propane gas cost? It's a ten-thousand-dollar difference between thirteen and fourteen, and, I mean, if you look at thirteen and fourteen actual, it's a ten-thousand-dollar increase for this budget year.
Does that have something to do with the kitchen?
We are using more propane because it's heating the new, the water for the dishwasher.
Yeah.
Ten thousand dollars worth of heat.
You know, we're trying to budget what we anticipate the need for, Lori, if you look, we have a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars budgeted for fuel, oh, we spent a hundred and-
Sixty-five, I see that.
sixty-five the year before, so, these, I, I said, budget for what you anticipate.
I, I'm just wondering why we're anticipating ten thousand dollars more cost.
My director of buildings and grounds gave me that figure.
And transportation or vocational, what's that?
For-
Is that Patricia Hannaford?
Yes. Which you get a reimbursement.
And can you speak, someone speak to why we have a hundred-and-fifty-one thousand-dollar deficit in the food service, how do we get there?
Lori, that, that's a cumulative deficit, and, you know, while I will say it's not uncommon for food services to have some level of deficit, why you have had it, it's, it's, it's been going on for ten years.
Yeah, 'cause just last year-
Just last year, it was eight thousand dollars, but when you don't address it over many, many years, it has accumulated.
Right, so, what I ask more accurately, what I'm asking is how does one get a deficit in food service, we're contracted, we contract with the food service company, so we know what we're gonna pay per the contract.
I'm pretty sure this was all accumulated prior to contracting with your food service people now.
Is the-
Didn't you just say there was an eight-thousand-dollar deficit in food service this last year?
Yes, and that's just based on your, there, there was, there's a position, according to, I, I spoke to Cafe Services, and there is a person funded in that budget that they're not sure why it's there, and it's an eighty-five-hundred-dollar person, and they're saying that's contributing to that deficit.
That's an interesting statement on your part, because- My understanding is that was a contracted part of the agreement, that they covered that person to do local food farm-to-table work, and I'm sure Lynn can tell us lots about that.
That it, this position would be written into the contract and be withheld throughout that contract, so as long as a con, outside company was in this school district or in this school, that this position would be there acting as a liaison.
So.
There is also part that you're not quite charging at the level that you should be charging.
There are federal guidelines that we should be charging for students who get free and reduced lunch, and also adults, and nowhere in the district are we charging at that level.
Oh, we've certainly always gone with the administration's recommendation on where to go with that.
It has, it, there's a requirement that we go at the federal level at this point, and I don't know why or if you have been notified about that, but it's, it's a significant change from what you're currently charging.
It's three dollars and twenty-five cents.
For student lunch.
For a student lunch.
Right.
We went up by a quarter this year.
Yeah, and, and I don't think that you really want to make a jump that large, you might lose a lot more money because of less participation.
That was the thought in, in with the previous year, in that lower recommendation, but it is, it's not catching up.
It's not, yeah, so, your reimbursements, y- your total costs are, minus your reimbursements that you get, they're not matching up because of the amount being paid by the students that actually pay, and the adults that pay.
Sorry, Lori, it's your, it's your time, I would prefer the food service organization not be indicating to you all that the cost of the farm-to-table program that they've agreed to fund is causing the deficit. If it's, if we're undercharging on lunches, we're undercharging on lunches, and that's causing a deficit, but not their contracted obligation, that's not causing deficit. No, I know, I'm not trying to be pointed at you, but I just-
I, I'm trying to get my head around this food service thing, we pay an administrative fee, sixteen thousand dollars according to this current contract, twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen contract, plus we reimburse them for, then what?
How's it work? How does it work?
Yes, 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 yes.
I'm, I really don't know as of yet, I've only met with them once, we went over the monthly financial, they were here early, or late November, early December, and I, I really didn't get into that piece of it, 'cause I was working on budgets, but they set up the budget, and that's what we pay on, they do all of the paperwork, they hire all the employees, and, and I agree, that's what we should pay, but we also, i- if, if we, if they don't collect enough in their reimbursements, then we have to pay the difference. If they don't have enough-
So, if kids don't participate?
If kids don't participate, that's set, that's based on a set number of kids participating, if they don't have that amount, amount of kids, we have to make up the difference, that's where our deficit comes in.
Okay, so the question to me, for me, is, every contract year, we should have this budgeted income and expenses, and who, and they, they just present to us at the end of the year, or whatever, quarterly, however often they do it, for the difference from what the budget is to what's actual, does anyone question where, I mean, these aren't our costs, we, we, you know, we are, we are contracting with somebody to do these costs, and they could just willy-nilly, pell-mell, eh.
The answer to your question, yes, Lori, we are questioning their costs, has this been at the top of our list of people to meet with on a regular basis? To be honest with you, I have not done that, but, but you're absolutely right, what should be happening, and we've been asking the same questions, it's on our radar screen, Tanya and I are very well aware of it, and we're on it, and we will be setting up meetings with them in the second half of the year, once we get past our January and February time period, so that we understand more fully, and, and question, and get those reports, we're supposed to be getting reports, I know I have not seen them.
I have been.
And you have been getting them, which is good news, but to spend the time to understand that and to get a clearer understanding with both of us what we expect around that contract remains to be seen at this point in time, but will happen.
And do we have any idea how long that deficit has been growing, do we know how far back it goes? Kathy?
Ten years? Ten years.
Ever since I started coming to school board meetings, I mean, when I first started coming, it was like sixty thousand, and I think the biggest thing is, it's never been addressed. It's never been done away with, I mean, it's just kept accumulating.
I'm passing the baton to Lori on this line of questioning this year, 'cause it's been my line of questioning in the past several.
Geez, thanks, Neil.
You're doing a great job.
Yeah, great.
Well, I mean, it's, it's more, more than questioning, we are addressing it in this budget, which is part of the angst that we're all feeling, because there have been years and years of things that have been grown to this point that we need to address, and this is a hard conversation.
You know, when Cafe Services came on-
You know, when Cafe Services came on, part of the deal was the deficit was gonna go away.
Who was gonna take care of it?
Well, that was, that there would be no deficit created from there on out. When they signed that contract, was it five years ago or?
Well, and if they're saying that eight thousand is only that, that deficit, then that's unclear. I mean, that, that's a mistake. I mean, that they're overlooking and not, you know, withholding to their obligation either.
Do you think there's. I'm sorry.
No.
Do you think there's any ability to get reimbursed from some of this cost for at least the five years that they've been contracting with us? Is there?
We certainly can have that conversation, yes.
And doesn't part of their money come with the participation of free and reduced lunch population? So if they're not actually actively soliciting that population.
That's our responsibility. We, we, we could, I mean, and it's not atypical of high schools. It's easier to get kids at the elementary school to sign up, but when they get to high school, there's a stigma attached. But I do think, and Stephanie and I have talked about this, another one of those on-the-radar strategies, we, we could do a better job with the way in which we sign kids up, maybe on a more personal level, to increase those numbers and we will do that next, beginning of next school year.
Yeah, right. And the last, or at least last for now, I would just like to make the statement that we have a state-renowned music program and I would really hate to see that cut and extracurricular activities go up. I think that would be a serious mistake for the school. Thank you. I also recognize this is really hard and I appreciate all the effort. Wish there was a magic wand. So do we.
I just want to be clear that any reductions you see are due to actual enrollments in the classes that are being offered.
Yeah, okay. Thanks for repeating that.
And that's what's being presented tonight, not necessarily what, yeah, what will end up being in the budget. So what's being presented tonight is based on the information that we've been given tonight. I think everyone at this table realizes that what's been presented is not, you know, the final draft. So that's why we're asking questions. George had a question and then Jeff.
Me, yes.
You're George?
You're George.
But there's another one too, so it confuses me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Who else is named George?
Anyway. Anyway. It's a.
Thank you, guys. Sorry.
Did you not, did you have questions? I'm sorry.
I just have one quick one.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead?
Then ask, yeah.
Um, we're looking at the class average size on this page. And is that including the seniors that we have now? Or is that including the freshmen that are gonna be enrolling?
Yeah, freshman, that includes, that's next year's enrollments.
So this is all next year, so there's no seniors involved?
Right.
I was gonna say, because we, you said we had seventeen Walden kids and how French had their only thirty-three students? I didn't know if there was any seniors involved in that number. So therefore see the freshman enrollment into Walden as well, so we can compare those numbers?
No, that's not included right now, Josh. Because as I mentioned earlier, Walden doesn't, hasn't historically.
Yeah, hasn't figured this out yet.
Until April, but we're gonna be moving that up like everyone else so that we can make better decisions about where kids are programmed for.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's, that's what I wanted to ask.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
In spite of what you may feel is my adversarial demeanor, I do appreciate the effort that you have made here because a ten or eleven million dollar budget is nothing to laugh about. And I know that it takes a lot of hard work and sweat on your part. That being said, what we end up with, please, absolutely no deficit going forward. It's gonna cost us an awful hunk of money to take care of this. And that may, by the time we get done with this process, bring us down where it's hurting programs. And we, we just can't keep going this way. It has to stop. Whatever you give to us is a bottom line, no deficit.
That's certainly the intent, George, and, you know, again, because the way that this built up for so many years, that's the point we're at.
I understand that.
You know, in the, in the presentation of the central office budget, we were going along and going along. We were going down a wrong path. We have to make corrections. This is not a budget that necessarily people feel good about, but it is a correction budget. And we hope going forward that it won't be as large as it is now. That, that as we are able to get our arms around those deficits, that we could begin to, to rebuild and look at, at the personalized and individualized programs that we want for our kids. That said, we have a policy that you've given us to look at class size and I believe we can still offer quality programs to kids with this budget. I believe that. Do we have to do better planning so that maybe they don't get what they want every year? Maybe they have to wait another year? Yes, but we all have to make some, some planning and some sacrifices. And I think the budget that we propose to you is, is the best-case scenario for a very difficult situation. For all involved. Maybe not the taxpayers and that's gonna be the challenge going forward. And I just pledge to you, I will do all that I can to work with civic groups, to, to meet with, with people who don't have kids in school, to really get information out so people understand what we're trying to accomplish here.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Neil, you said you wanted more.
I have just some, some thoughts. I mean, obviously, we're not done yet and I echo what everybody says about the hard work because I know this is kind of a squirming meeting and I came to it feeling that way myself. I mean, having had a chance to read what you put together, it's difficult. So I, I just have some thoughts as to some materials that would assist us in clarifying what this looks like to the public. In no particular order, I'd like to see, for each iteration of the budget that comes forward, I'd like to, not see, I'd like to suggest that Tanya or someone prepare a graphical summary that sort of shows the breakdown. Here's instructional, here's athletics or extracurricular, here's music.
Like my part, my pie chart that I gave?
Yeah, and perhaps also, in the case of this particular budget, it may be very useful to prepare a graphic that contrasts last year, this year. And then for those broad chunks of increase that you're attributing to areas newly found in the budget that weren't properly budgeted for by the prior administration, to the best of your ability, a graphical breakdown of those so somebody can visually see what is going on. Because it was one of the hardest things for us to be able to do, to represent our community in front of the voters, to say, this is what we need and this is why, without good visuals. You know, some people just need that. I also think as part of this, the increase in the district budget is, you know, we talked about it at our district meeting and there's very important things that need to happen there, understood. The same treatment of the district budget and a clear portrayal of the part of that that belongs to the high school and all the other sending schools. And a graphical breakdown of what that is, including what was not previously budgeted and what is being now budgeted. Do you, do you follow where I'm going?
I, I do follow where you're going, Neil, and I think, I would appreciate maybe, before we present this back to the boards, if, because this is, it sounds like you've got an idea in your head if maybe you could take a look at what we put together and give us some feedback on that.
I'd be happy to because last year I, I did that. You know, I kind of tried to put together some materials, but this is a little bit more complex because we're trying to explain, you know, why this increase, you know. Literally, we're trying to explain why a budget increase is proposed at the same time as a four-point-oh FTE reduction is proposed, plus a, you know, one-point-three or one-point-one-three increase. So it's a tricky sell.
It is a tricky sell.
And anything that we can do to clarify visually will be helpful. I think that I'll stop there and for now.
So one more question and then one comment. I just want to make sure, in the spirit of not having deficits going forward, the budgeting for debt service shows an increase of about eighty thousand dollars as compared to the current year. Seems light. So we have a reduction in our two thousand and one bond?
Your principal payment for your bond stays the same for the next ten years or however long you have your bond for. But the interest amounts keep going down because obviously you're paying off the interest. So, and then on top of it, you also have the interest for your five-year note in there, built into there.
Which was one fifty in principal plus interest.
Right.
So that's why I'm questioning.
And the interest is a lot higher getting a five-year note from People's Bank than it is through the bond bank.
But, but you understand my question? It's only showing an increase of eighty thousand dollars. We've talked about adding one fifty, so it's seeming light to me. I just want to make sure it's.
It's accurate.
It's adequate, okay.
I took the numbers from the audit for the bond payment and then I also took the numbers from the People's Bank that they gave me for a debt service.
Okay. I have a history that was provided to the board in October of two thousand and thirteen on the food service program.
Really?
Showed.
Really?
That would be interesting to look at.
I got that too, but it's in a big, huge pile at home and his is right there.
So for ten years at that point, the aggregate deficit was sixty-one thousand dollars. So I'll give this to you, would be, I'm not sure I understand how we got to one fifty. Again, we may not have been presented accurate information, but that was our understanding.
And I'm just taking my numbers from the audits.
Yeah. Probably more accurate. I, I'm troubled by the idea of five years to liquidate a deficit. It seems imprudent to me. It seems a guarantee that we will never run a deficit during the, that five-year period. I'm uncomfortable with that, speaking for myself as one board member. I would like to see a plan that liquidates that over a shorter term. I understand that that causes pressure.
Well, it's gonna be a separate line item regardless, is that correct?
Yes.
No.
Well, I mean, in debt service.
It's under debt service.
It's under debt service.
But it's a, it's a, it's a separate article. If, if you go three years or more, it has to be a separate article on your warning for voters to vote on.
Still in the budget.
Still in the budget.
I, but they could vote down that line.
Yes.
They could vote down that line.
And then we'd have to go back and, and change the budget. So even if the budget was approved, if that line was, was not approved, we'd have to go back and redo the budget.
And they'd have to re-vote on the budget as well? That's how it works?
That's how it works.
Good question. Regarding that, I don't recall voting. When I've gone to vote for the budget, it's, it's for a total amount, not for a line item.
Yeah, and there's, there's a reason for that because we've avoided separate articles. There's another, another, you know, stipulation that we're, we try to avoid every year and that is, you know, something that I wanted to bring up again and, and at the end of all the questions. And that is making sure that everyone understands what the threshold limit is. So that would cause a cer, a similar situation where if we, you know, and I'll, and I'll discuss that, but certain triggers require us to separate out certain requirements for the voters to vote specifically on. So you haven't seen that because we've always avoided the threshold limit. We've kept our increases very low. And we intend to do that again, speaking personally. But that's, that's why you haven't voted on it. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. I said, want to clarify, we, we haven't had the experience then of voting line items when we go into the polls. That hasn't ever happened to mine.
Yeah, so there are.
Separate articles, I understand what our business manager said that, you know, and if it's more than three years, is that what he said? Then for reducing a debt, there needs to be a separate article. I understand that. But if it's under three years, if the amount was, if the debt was enough, wasn't that high that you felt you could, the board then could include that in the budget without presenting it as a separate article.
So you're not voting on the line item. You're voting on the article that we have to present to you because of certain stipulations.
Can I, can I just ask Jeff to explain the imprudency of, of having a five-year plan versus a three-year plan, Jeff? Because when I think about the different deficits and the bond that we're paying down collectively, that seems to me maybe imprudent because it's gonna have a major impact on our student program. So what, what, give me a little bit more information about your thinking. It doesn't seem to be that much of a difference if we proposed a three-year plan versus a five-year plan. But it would have an impact in terms of hundreds of thousands of dol, you know, a hundred thousand dollars is a big deal either way, whether we have to cut or whether we're gonna add.
We didn't buy a capital item for that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We overspent. There's nothing, there, there's no value there. It, it's, it's gone. It will impact the program going forward. We're not doing multiple-year budget to understand what the impact is five years out. And based on the history, I would have a hard time being confident that we won't have any other financial challenges over the course of that five years. It is the reason that we chose to liquidate two thousand and thirteen's deficit in one year. To try to clear the ground going forward. I, I understand that's a challenge. Five years just seems interminable to me.
Well, it is true and I hope you realize that we could not promise that we would not have a deficit. There are too many wild cards. I mean, special education is a big one.
Exactly.
And, and that, you know, in terms of controlling the budget that we can control, absolutely. Making sure that, that our money goes as far as, as we can possibly stretch it, yes. Get the best deal for leases and supplies and energy and things like that, yes. But there certainly are wild cards that we have no control over. My hope is in consolidating special ed that we're gonna see less volatility, that we're gonna see a lot more even and not the big highs and lows that we have. But that's the hope. I can't certainly promise that.
One strategy to look at this, Tanya, following up on your comment about debt service costs in general, would be looking ahead and seeing whether we're going, what relief we will have on an annual basis in terms of declining cost over the next five years. So if we're paying less interest each year, if we're about to retire the two thousand and one bond, what space will that give us to provide us with some confidence that by rolling this forward, we're not just hamstringing ourselves two years from now? Or three years?
Right.
Is there any offset? I'm not asking you to answer that right now, but it's a way to try to analyze this.
And in the best-case scenario, we, I mean, we hope to get to some level of multi-year budgeting. We're not there yet. But that's certainly a hope and there are some, some ways that we can forecast ahead and certainly analyzing the debt service in that way should help.
If I may. Yeah, just let me react to what Jeff said first and then you can go, George. I'm, what I'm doing, I'm writing down action items. So I'm trying to understand what you're asking about. And, and I believe what you're asking about is some of the things that we presented to the public during the bond during, during the bond votes and the bond presentations. And that was how the current, you know, two thousand and one bond was actually reducing and the use of. was actually reducing the use of that money. So is that what you're asking about?
Essentially.
Exactly, yeah. So, Tanya, you'd find that, and, Joanne. You'd find that information in some of those presentations if you don't have a system, a financial system that it was included in, where the, the amount that we were paying each year was being reduced, and then corresponding amounts would be paid for based on the most current bond. So, is that information you've already looked at, or do I need to put it down as an action item for you?
I've all, I've, I've pulled your bond information out of your audit, and it, the current bond that you have right now goes out to twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
And that would be paid off in twenty twenty-one. You still have about two million nine hundred and twenty thousand to go on that bond. So, I haven't seen those presentations, I haven't, you know.
So that's where I would go to get the kind of information that Jeff is asking for.
Okay.
You know, how, where the, you know, where the, the, you know, the payment increases for the current, for the current bond and the payment decreases for the previous bond, you know, where those intersect, and because we, we spent quite a bit of time looking at that.
Yes.
So I'm sure the information is there, and if you need help, ask me, I'll go looking for it.
Yeah, I might.
I think I have that on paper. I know I have that on paper.
So, I, I call that cash flow, so I'm just gonna ask you for the cash flow analysis of the, the bond payments and the interest and how those sync out. Makes sense?
Okay.
Okay. And now you want to go.
Yeah, quick comment. Just a extrapolation of what you've said here about the principal payments and the interest payments. It's gonna cost us about seventy-five thousand dollars in interest to amortize that seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand over a five-year period. If we did it in two, we'd save about thirty thousand dollars in interest. And doing it in two would be half of that amount as principal, and that would be less money per year than we did to get rid of the thirteen deficit. So it seems like that would be something that, if you'd look into, those are just rough figures, obviously, but it seems like it's well worthwhile to consider, because every, every dollar is, if we can save thirty thousand, it's worth looking at.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I just wanna add that I just went back through the financial statements to see if I could figure out how much deficit we've incurred since the current food service people have been here. And for some reason, two thousand ten and eleven don't have, nor does two thousand twelve have the same schedules as these, but two thousand, excuse me, two thousand eleven and ten. Two thousand and twelve has a twelve thousand dollar deficit, operating deficit, so that would be the current year added twelve thousand, and then last year was eight thousand, like you said. That's twenty thousand in two years. Be nice if we could get some of that money back.
That's a hell of a lot of money in two years.
That's a hell of a lot of money in two years. On a program that's, where's the food service contract? Two hundred thousand dollars? The total revenue? Yeah, the total revenue is two hundred and forty thousand in the current contract. That's a lot of money. It's a huge deficit.
George had brought up this summer, you know, the idea of taking a look at that, taking a look at that contract.
Yeah.
So.
On, on that same, have you considered putting the bus contract out to bed?
We have a contract with the bus company through two thousand seventeen. We will be able to do a new RFP at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board questions?
Have we looked outside the box and, as far as transportation, he was saying something about Addison County actor, actor. I don't know.
Uber?
It's just, it's so much money that we didn't budget for, that's included in that seven hundred and thousand. Plus, we're having a hit in twenty sixteen for the extracurriculars. I don't wanna keep the kids in the school any more than anybody else does, but, oh my gosh, I don't know.
You don't wanna what, the kids?
I don't wanna keep the kids in the school any more than anyone else does. Meaning, you know, they need to get out, they need to do things that are interesting, and it's just that we're in a really bad position right now.
So, at this point, I'm hoping to get further budget guidance from the board.
Yeah, I have, if, are there any questions or comments, or any other questions from the public? Yeah, go ahead.
And lunch transfer, is that something to do with this deficit that you're talking about?
Yes, to cover the part of the deficit.
One-third.
One-third.
Christine?
I, I guess I would just add, when you're considering how to instruct them to move forward, you're talking a lot about saving money, saving money, and I just want you to think about the other side of that equally. How the students are gonna be impacted, how the staff is gonna be impacted. What are the opportunities that are gonna be left if you start slashing here and there, and whatever you have to do? Personally, my experience with my kids here, it, it's been difficult for them to get classes that they needed and wanted, and with the existing system. So if you start really playing around with, you know, class size versus what classes kids are gonna be able to take, what are the real opportunities gonna be for students in this school? And that's what, that's what I think about the most, that's what I care about the most. I think you can sell a budget if you believe in it and you believe in the school, so. I just want you to think about that, too.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Understanding the, the work that goes on to get to this point, and the thought and planning that the administration has to go through, and what you as elected reps have to consider. You're, you're on the board because you value education, you also have that responsibility of watching the fiscal line. And I, you know, our administrators are, are doing that as well, so we spend a lot of time in conversation about the dollar. And I'm thinking about particularly of, of, I'll say right up, I, I support the presentation that the administration has made. I can tell that it's really been thought through and some tough decisions have been made. That piece about how to handle the deficit and how to eliminate it, and thinking to do it over time as opposed to trying to do it all at once or in a brief period of time, and the impact that has on what we're all about here, about educating kids, and to be thoughtful about how to, to balance that out. Five years sounds like a long time, but it's also that maybe the mechanism that has the, the least impact and yet gets the job done. So I think you want, may think that through. As a community member, I'm willing to help in any way to communicate the merits in that, understanding that it would take, you know, some discussion and conversation, so. I'm telling you what my position is, but I'm also offering, you know, to help, you know, to support that in any way that I can.
Can I write down your name?
Rick Ebel.
Rick.
E.B.E.L.
E.V.E.L.
Ferrisburg.
Thank you.
I have, I have, did we talk about twenty fifteen deficit?
We, we've been referring to it, Laurie, and we're doing all that we can to monitor our, and alter our spending as to avoid and to absorb the unbudgeted items that we have laid out to you this evening. I think Stephanie has done an incredible job. We've, we've limited field trips, we have, we have decided that there are some new hire savings that can go into addressing the budget. What I wrote in my highlights to you is that we will have a better idea in March at my expenditure report to you in March, concerning where we're gonna be at the end of the year, but we are, we are trying rigorously to, to, to make sure that we end on a positive note.
I mean, if I look at, I'm not sure I can do this, but if I look at twenty fourteen actuals, twenty thirteen actuals. Right, no, twenty fourteen actuals. I mean, we're a million four over twenty fifteen budget.
Yep, you're right.
Oh, God, okay.
Thank you.
So the budget that was presented to you is right in line with your spending.
Mm-hmm, I see that.
Not what was budgeted for actuals for fifteen.
I, I'm just trying to think, we've got a seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar deficit that we're gonna roll, and now we're gonna ask them next year, too, for another gigantic one.
It's even more important that we get rid of this deficit that we now have a number figure on as fast as we can, because we can see the train running down the tracks at us again. Right?
And the seven sixty-eight is the twenty fourteen audited number.
Yep.
Cumulative through twenty fourteen, that has not been recouped yet.
So that's nothing to do with what we're sinking in the hole right now.
Current, yeah.
So let's look at double that figure.
No, I wouldn't do that, George.
Please don't do that, but, I mean, based on twenty fourteen to twenty fifteen, that's what it looks like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then if it comes out less, boy, we can all feel good.
We're doing everything we can to monitor spending, and remember, when we went into this budget, that was a result of almost nine FTEs reduction. So we had big salary reductions last year to settle this budget that we went into. So we're proposing another four, you know, we did a lot of right sizing in those areas, so I'm keeping an eye on, on what we're spending. Every day, I'm keeping an eye on what we're spending.
It was four point nine last year.
Pardon?
I thought it was four point nine FTE last year reduction.
It was a total of five, if you call, if you, if you count special educators and paraeducators. It was the equivalent of, of, of nine FTEs across all areas of the school.
Five or nine?
Nine.
Last year?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought the budget that we moved reduced five FTE, four point nine FTE, was the number that's in my mind, not nine, but whatever.
I understand that you're watching very carefully and that you're making reductions where you can. But if we went into that with this kind of a loss from the previous year, then can you be that careful to eliminate that much of a, of a deficit? I mean, I know.
You know, I think at this point, what would be really helpful to us, if we could get some budget guidance, 'cause George, those are great questions, but until we can give you an expenditure report that gives you actually where we are at, I, I think trying to conjecture about some of the, the areas that you're, that you're looking for answers to might be a little bit premature. Does that, does that make sense?
It does. But aren't we, aren't we gonna have to finalize this budget for the voters before we actually get those, those year-end figures?
Absolutely. You're not gonna get your year-end FY fifteen figures until the, the fall of two thousand and fifteen.
I mean, even your March report is after we've approved a budget to go to the voters.
That's correct. So you will not, if you do have a deficit, you will not need to, to budget for that until FY seventeen, correct? Seventeen.
But we gotta think about it.
We are thinking about it. That's, I'm not, I'm not trying to shut the conversation down, I'm just, I think, rather than thinking about what might be, let's wait till we can give you a report that has more detail to it, and it would be helpful for us tonight if, if you could give us some guidance concerning the next, the next presentation.
Gotta go down.
Okay. So what I, does anyone else have any other questions? So, I, I met with Joanne earlier today, so I had any questions or reactions that I had with her in our, in our meeting, so. Had similar questions to, to what you all are asking, and not in such detail, but you know, there's, there's some concern in some areas, and I think we need to set some expectations that it's gonna be very difficult again this year. So, some of the things I wrote down was, just to make sure that everyone understands what we talk about when we talk about a threshold limit. Wanted to make sure, because that's one of the most difficult calculations that, that school boards and districts have to make, and, and actually take the information from the budget and actually put it in real dollars and cents that you can anticipate in the next, in the next year paying. So I, I wanted to make sure that we at least brought that up. It is, there is a, a sheet that you got in your package, and I hope everyone looked at. That, you know, goes through the mechanics of that, that calculation. So it's, it's good to keep that in mind, although it's, the numbers that are there now in the first iteration, it's best to just look at those and make sure that we are below the threshold. Because if we're not below the threshold, then that, that, that causes other issues. So thank you for keeping us below the threshold. That starts us, us off at a, at least a point where we can have these discussions. And numbers have been thrown around about reductions in force, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands that there's, you can have reductions and at the same time that you have increases. So, you know, the, the net, net of the, if you use the numbers that are, are being discussed now and combine them, you know, it, it, it is a calculation of, of, you know, FTEs or, you know, percentages or, or full-time, you know, full-time positions, but some of the things that, that we're reducing have to do with, not with requirements that we have, but they're, they're, they're being reduced because of financial pressures and because of participation. So I wanna make, make sure everyone understands that. The things that we're increasing in have to do with who we are as a, as a, as a community, and, and some of the things that we said we wanna do in the school. And that, that is the point eight, you know, FTE of literacy, and the, the point thirty-three FTE in, in physical education. Those are, those are based on things that we said we wanted to do, and we wanna do based on, on policy. And, so I wanna make sure that you, you remember that there's a distinction between those reductions and, you know, the additions that, that are in the budget as of right now. We also need to keep in mind that we just invested a lot of money in the building. And that we need to take a look at the building projects that you have, the, the prioritization and the operations and maintenance plan that I hope we've been updating, and I've seen a draft of it. So that's also a, a financial concern that we need to keep in front of the public and continue to protect that investment as we go forward. So, you know, we are where we are. There's some action items that I can either give to you or, or, you know, send you an email, but I just wanted to make sure that you understand that we're looking for more detail on the deficit. Need to know what that, what's entailed in that number. Now, this isn't your guidance, by the way, these are just action items. I know you asked for guidance, and we're getting to that. I know you asked for guidance and we're getting to that.
You're getting to that, alright.
The transportation, uh, use of ACTR or any other, uh, you know, I don't know if public schools can use Addison County transportation resources and, uh, I don't know if there's, you know, legal issues there or not, but, it certainly is something that should be looked into, uh, if it is a possibility. And then, um, what Neil was talking about, a graphical representation. It would be very, very helpful if we start from the beginning, uh, with that. And, um, you know, we put together, uh, that graphical representation when we went out to public groups and, and talked to, uh, the communities about what we were doing. And, you know, if you, if you start from the beginning, if you put the, the, uh, the models together from the beginning, it'll make it easier for us to continue to communicate, um, with some historical perspective. And, you know, I hate to use cliches, but, you know, what we showed people last year, they're gonna be looking for again, you know, in apples-to-apples comparison. So it'd be good if we could keep that, keep it that way. Uh, and then the cash flow analysis on the bond payments. Let's take a look at those and make sure that, um, those are, um, in line with what, what's been budgeted for, for deficit reduction or for, uh, payments for, uh, debt re- debt reduction. So as far as, uh, those are concerned, I think, you know, those are all there. So.
I could add to that.
Yeah.
I've been asked to research, um, a little more about the teen, um, the teen program, the collaborative program.
Oh, the teen program, yeah.
And, uh, and, um, morbid analysis concerning the, um, extracurricular coaches. Line item.
And also the supplies.
That, that whole section probably, yeah.
Whole section, okay.
Yep.
I know we have a bunch of technology in here, can we s- uh, increase cost for technology, can we spread that over two years? Instead of do it.
We, we actually are, because it, the, the, the money represents, um, a three-year lease.
So at the end of the three years, we don't own anything?
At the end of three years, we, I believe we give it, we give it back or they sell it to us for a dollar or something like that?
Depends which plan we, we take.
We go with, yeah.
But the lifespan of a, of a Chromebook is about, uh, three years anyways?
The generation in technology is eighteen months, so, you know, if it lasts three years, you're getting, you know, great, great value. So, I, I think, I think the feedback we're trying to give you is, you know, it's a, it's a great beginning. Uh, and I, I'm gonna make my comments, everyone else should feel free to make their comments as well. It's a good beginning, I don't think it's enough, um, of a reduction or, you know, I don't think it's, it, it's close enough to our original request. Uh, and, you know, I know you put down a, a list of things that you could look at without reducing program. But I don't, I don't know if that's, um, the only things you can look at. I, but, you know, if those are, if those are what you'd like to do or what you could do. I'm not saying anybody likes any part of this, but i- if that's what you could do, then, um, I'm not sure that you want us to prioritize those or.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
No, I think what would be really helpful is if the board could tell us whether you're looking at a certain percent increase in the budget, whether you're looking at a certain tax rate, now that we have tax rate information. So that kind of financial information and furthermore, I'd let, you really need to, I need to have some direction from the full board concerning how you want us to deal with the deficit. I know how Jeff feels, but I need, I need that to be a full board decision.
Yeah.
So that kind of clear direction, so Stephanie and I know what we need to deal with going back into deliberation.
Okay. So before we do that, it would be, and again, this is, um, as an individual, it would be easier for me to look at this. You've, you've cited a lot of unanticipated budgeted, unbudgeted items. It, it would be, uh, easier for me to, to look at, um, a flat budget if I knew uh, what those unantic- what the total of those unanticipated budgeted items, items were. You know, how much did that, um, contribute to the eleven percent increase?
Two hundred and fifty thousand, but are you looking for me to break that down by percent of the eleven?
I can do the math.
Okay.
That's fine, so it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of unanticipated budget items.
Seems low to me.
Well, it's because you, it's because we're baking seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand accumulated deficit from prior year.
Yeah.
So I could go through, down through this and add up two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of unbudgeted. Yeah?
If you knew, I could tell you where it's from, I could tell you where it's from, because remember, I moved, we moved some pieces around, you're gonna see some zeros and.
I can see, I can see some of it.
But you're not gonna be able to figure out the salaries. You need to remember, the salary increases were not budgeted.
So Lori, if you look at my categories, you know, I, the student tuition, you can clearly see that, you can see staff tuition, you can see the energy costs, you can see the transportation costs, and you can see the unbudgeted position in technology. The other, the other is more.
Salary.
Is salaries, but we don't, we don't really have a handle on how much of that, because we haven't been able to find where they possibly budgeted some money to address the salary adjustments.
So if we say that there's two hundred and fifty thousand that was unbudgeted. That means that we spent five hundred and eighteen thousand over our budget on budgeted items?
We're talking about fifteen, we're talking about fifteen right now.
Oh.
The unbudgeted numbers are in fifteen.
Okay, but they must have been in fourteen also.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, I, I mean.
Pretty apt to be.
Remember what happened in July.
Yeah.
Can I offer a couple of thoughts? Um, I think it would be helpful for me and probably for the board. I'd like to propose that we think about this in terms of the tax rate because we can. And that's the most powerful thing that we have to, to communicate with people on. So we know that there's two cent increase no matter what we do, period, okay, so that's, you know.
Estimated, it's not set in stone.
I know, and that depends, well.
Won't be until May.
And the lower that we keep our numbers and everybody else does, the closer we live to two percent. Right now, we're looking at six, oh, sorry, two cents, right now, we're looking at six cents. Um, it might be interesting to see what a budget would look like at four cents and what a budget would look like at the state's two cents.
So remember, what I, what I said in, in my summary is for every penny on the tax rate, we will be cutting two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
And I, I was, I still didn't follow the, I didn't, and I don't, I don't want Tanya to have you go through it again. I didn't follow the math that came from the bottom up when we did the math from the top down, but I'll, I'll take your word on it.
So we will be cutting another four hundred and fifty thousand to show you four cents?
I, 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 yes, I understand that.
And nine hundred thousand to show us the four cents?
Two cents.
Two cents.
Two cents.
Well.
Would be.
Two cents left, yeah.
Those are, those are, you know, those are two steps along the path towards what citizens have already come to me, actually, your constituents, uh, asking for, which is a zero increase in, in the tax rate, which we know is impossible.
So is that, okay, so is, is the, is the, um, direction that Neil just gave the will of the board?
No, well, well, I, I'm gonna give you an actionable item, or we're gonna give you an actionable item, I'm gonna call for a motion and then we'll give you
Okay.
An actionable item, so. But I want, I don't wanna stymie the conversation.
Yeah, I mean, I just trying to move things along by getting something out on the table.
So.
Would you like to move them or would you like that to be an actionable?
Let's just hear what people have to say at this point.
Is there any way to cut two hundred and twenty-five thousand out of this budget without riffing anybody else?
No.
No. Seventy percent of your budget is salary and benefits.
He said, how mu- how much is the transportation, unbudgeted transportation, do we know of that?
About a hundred thousand.
About a hundred thousand. So if we riffed all excess besides to and from, we could get another hundred. If everybody took their kids to the sport, yeah, right.
That'll, that'll definitely go over well.
Oh, yeah, big.
Oh, I can see that flying, yeah, right.
Talk about a rock and a hard place this year.
I, I would like to state that I am sickened by how much staff reduction we've had over the last two years. It's sickening, and it frightens me and what Christina said is, um, I know we have a reduction in kids, I know that, and we have to address adjusting the school so that it's a well-run financial machine. But I don't wanna, I don't, I mean, I, I don't wanna riff anybody else, this is hard. And I would rather put it to the voters and let them turn it down.
I don't think we're being responsible if we put to the voters an extra million dollars.
I don't think we have a choice.
I think that we have to, we have to pair that before we can ever think of talking to the voters about it.
But, but this budget is in compliance with our class, class size, they have looked at all the classes, they have, they have cut, um, programs based on kids signing up for particular classes. I mean, they've done the very responsible thing and also very, uh, fiscally. It makes sense to me, right, that they're cutting based on what kids are going to need next year. We're gonna ask them to cut more, so does that mean that AP Bio's gotta go? I mean, I, I know they're gonna make that decision, but they're, they're already cutting based on.
Maybe that'll be a once every other year course.
Yeah, but they're already considering that.
Considering it.
No, I mean, that's already considered in this budget. That they are going to have to make those changes, so that some kids, and, you know, God forbid, we get a senior that wants to get AP Bio and, oh, gosh, sorry, we don't offer it this year, you'll have to wait till next year, and they're a frickin' senior. So then they don't go to Brown, or because we don't have AP Bio. I think it's, you know, it is so hard, and this is not personal, but it is really hard to trust the administration now, after everything that I'm seeing. And it's not personal, because I believe in you guys. But, and I feel like I have to. I have no choice but to trust that you're doing the right thing with the programs, keeping what we need for these kids. We got a hundred, a million dollar increase, seven hundred, no, that's.
Yeah, it's over a million, it's eleven, million one.
And of that, two hundred and fifty is nothing we ha- we have to include because it's contractual.
Apparently. I understand where you're coming from, Lori, but there's a rock wall behind us and we're up against it.
And we're only talking a hundred and twenty dollars on a two hundred thousand dollar house.
But you've got to remember that the taxpayers told us in the past,
Yes.
last year, that we were already at that wall. They turned down the budget because of that.
Okay, well.
We almost have over five percent.
Roughly, almost five percent of the people delinquent right now.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is that higher or lower?
It's higher.
That's a lot.
That's a lot. We pay, you know, twice a year.
Yep.
But our first payments, we got roughly about, a little less than five percent.
Unpaid.
Unpaid. And I've talked to many people at, at different stores, they're, they're hoping that their income tax return can pay their taxes. You know, and that's, that's the situation that we're at, so yeah, you're right, a hundred and thirty dollars an increase really doesn't look much. But when you're already facing the fact that you're already at the wall, that you don't have the, the amount to cover your, your house. And your house is already way valued more than what it really is, that you could sell on the market. So, you know, it's, it's hard to go back to them and say, you know. And it's also, I, I don't think any of us are here because we wanna pass the buck and let them vote it down. We wanna present something that they're, they'll be acceptable to.
That's right.
I mean, I have two kids in this, in this system, and I hate to have anything that they enjoy or looking forward to down the road be cut. I mean, and I, I think I, I voice everyone's concern who has kids, who has any relatives or even mentor kids that are in, in this school system. If you're gonna have programs that are gonna be cut because they're, they're facing it, or they're gonna have one of their favorite teachers or that, who not only teaches them, but is a mentor to them. Not, not available, because their, their FTE has been cut from a full FTE to a point eight. You know, I, it, it's not, it's not an easy place we're here. But that's where we are, the cost is just not, the, the cost, the, the stuff that we can't do anything about has put us against the wall on the things that we have to, have to cut.
Did I see your finger go up?
Are, are you still looking for comments? I'm mindful of time, I wanna, I, I don't know where you wanna go with this. You're, you're gonna get more comment and then a motion, is that the way you wanna do it?
I would like to, to give the administration an actionable item.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, based on, um, the board's direction. And I, I'm willing to spend as much time as you want to expressing opinions, but without an actionable item, I don't think that, um, our administration is getting the kind of direction that we need to get there.
So, um, I'll, I'll make a comment on a request. Next time we get a budget presentation, could we have a variance column, please? Um, between fifteen and sixteen, so we can see the differences line by line to understand where those differences are, that's one request. I support the administration's proposal, in fact, I'd support another hundred thousand dollars in spending to liquidate the deficit over not more than three years. I think in terms of opportunities for kids, I can't listen to flexible pathways and individual learning programs and understand that we're carrying the cost for that and then, um, think that we can't give kids opportunities, that just doesn't register for me. So I think we are giving kids opportunities, we have to think about how we're doing it in different ways. If somebody can't take AP Bio, they can go take a college Bio class. I think we are providing the opportunities, I think this is a responsible budget. So as I say, for me, if I were to make a motion, I would, my motion would be to support this and perhaps increase it in order to liquidate the FY14 deficit over a shorter period of time.
Okay. Is there a motion on the floor or am I not interested in providing a motion?
I will move Neil's proposal.
Okay, could you repeat that for Lori's sake?
You, you will be more accurate in saying it than I will.
Well, I'm not gonna make the same proposal that I made, so I'll make a motion and then you can either see to amend it or we can vote it down and then go, and you can go. So, um, I would like to make a motion that we request two budgets be put together for our consideration. One that reflects a tax rate. One, that reflects a tax rate increase of no more than 5 cents. Another, that reflects a tax rate increase of no more than 4 cents. Because I can't even think about going down to two.
Okay.
Based on what that means. Now, that's a motion.
Yes.
It can be seconded or not.
Sir, a second.
I second.
Second. Thank you.
And it can be friendly amended.
Any additional discussion?
To add a third.
I would like to include in there somehow that we make a rapid repayment of that deficit. We need to, there's no way that we can run five years because we know that no matter how careful we are, we're going to run into problems and we're going to incur one, two, maybe three deficits in that period of time and we can't be still paying this one off. So I would propose that included in your tax rate, that we pay off the current deficit in no more than two years. I would offer that as an amendment.
I'm not sure. This is a very, very difficult situation.
Well, it's...
You know, I mean, already I'm coming to a place where I really, I don't want to be the guy to move the budget being down. I like what Jeff says, which is why I said I'm open a friendly amendment for a third permutation as well.
So there's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. In order to amend that emotion, that motion, it either has to be friendly to you or we need a second for the amendment?
I mean, we're just looking at permutations, so, yeah, so I'll accept the friendly amendment that we reduce the timeframe involved.
So the timeframe that George said was two years.
Did he say two?
Yes.
No, I can't do that. I'm, sorry.
If we don't pay it off in two years, we're going to be paying double because there'll be another deficit in between, believe me.
Okay, so it's not friendly. The amendment needs a second though so we can vote on it.
I mean, how do we do that?
Is there a second to the amendment?
I don't know. But what we're asking is for the administration to give us some figures so that we can look at and say, does this work or not? So let's give them that as a guidance to work on and we don't have to agree to it when they bring it back. Okay?
But you're already asking them, with the original motion, you're already asking for a reduction for what they've already came with and now you're asking them to factor in the fact that we wanted to get rid of our debt in two years instead of what the original, this original plan is five, what we have here, right?
That's why I'm saying no.
This is five and we want two. And on top of the two, we want also, we want to look at what the figures are going to be with that two-year plan with one less cent or two less cents.
Talking about a seven or eight hundred thousand dollar reduction?
Right, that's what I'm saying.
This is why, this is why I'm not friendly to it.
Okay, so I'll ask one more time. Is there a second to the amendment? And if not, we'll drop the amendment and go back to the original motion. Okay, there is no amendment then.
I would like to comment about the original.
Yeah, so we're discussing the motion.
Just so everybody knows, anytime we have a reiteration of the budget, it's my understanding that if there is going to be a teacher cut, they have to be notified. So that if we get this reiteration, does that mean those teachers have been notified and then we have a real, I mean, we already had a really terrible day today, I understand. So that means we're going to have more terrible days.
Yep.
And it might not even come to fruition. We might say, no, 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 we don't want that. We want this back.
That's true.
My God, we're just, we're killing these guys.
But that's the, that's the way it has to be handled. It's handled in public. There are laws that we have to abide by. I understand your frustration, but, you know, I don't mean to sound cold to the issue, but I am callous after eight years to the situation. We do need to move forward and so I'd like to know if there are any other comments or discussion on the motion that's on the floor. They're not hearing any. Is everyone ready to vote? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Of the motion?
My motion, yes.
Aye for the motion.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Nay.
Yes.
Nay.
Excuse me?
Nay.
Nay and...
Nay.
I move it, I have to vote. I just have to put for it, so aye.
So, okay, I'd like to see, I show my hands. All those in favor of the motion?
All of us in favor.
Three in favor, okay. And two opposed. Okay.
If I may.
Just a moment, please. Two, four, six. Three have voted. It's not a majority.
You can vote.
So I need to vote.
You can vote.
And I'd like to vote against the motion. So the motion fails. So is there another motion for the floor?
Do you have something, Jeff?
I propose accepting the administration's recommendation with a shorter liquidation of the FY14 deficit. Three years, ideally two, minimum of three. We'll see. John, I'm thinking about the lunch thing. I mean, there's low hanging fruit. Took 10 years to get there. We don't have to do that in three years.
I will second, I will second that motion based on two years.
We're negotiating?
He said two or three.
Oh, he did.
So I'm seconding the two options.
Let's see, let's see budgets that look like that. Let's see what that looks like in terms of the tax rate.
So before we discuss the motion, is there a second to the motion?
Not a second.
Thank you, Richard.
So we can see what those two permutations will look like and what they mean. Have you been explaining what they mean?
If you would be acceptable to that, so we get two versions that show us what those differences are?
Matt, I have a clarification. You're saying that we're voting on 10, 469, 750 with a two-year repayment of the deficit.
One version at two, one year at three.
But are we voting for the 10 million?
But for the same dollar amount.
But for the same dollar.
Same dollar.
And you would be open to a different permutation for the food service?
Well, we're not getting under the hood. You're going to come back and decide. I just threw that out because that's one piece of low hanging fruit there.
So, so if, to enlighten this uneducated individual, we're looking at the 10 million dollar bottom line that's presented here, 10-5, let's just say, with, but coming with this magic number, but increasing the amount that we're paying our loan back with. So we're still, we still got to, in areas, we're going to be getting cuts.
Any other discussion on the motion? Any questions or comments? Is everyone ready to vote?
Yep.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Richard? The motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
There's nothing else on the agenda, so...
I do have one more question and maybe this is not good timing, but what information would you like from the administration about long-range building projects? Should you consider a separate article to be brought in front of the community? We have, we have a list of prioritizations we could, that's what you'd like?
I'd like to see the prioritizations and ensure that the projects are linked back to the operations and maintenance.
Absolutely.
Last year, we moved a small amount of money into a capital reserve. We pledged that we would do that on an annual basis. We built policy around it and we moved that policy.
Right.
So...
That's a separate article.
That's a separate article.
Yeah.
Okay. Wouldn't this be a separate article as well, though?
This would be a separate article as well, similar to what happened last year and we also have some suggestions for how we might use the money that was generated for the current year. We will bring that plan to you as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? For those of you who have to travel, please travel safely. Thank you for coming. This meeting is adjourned.